Excuse me, I'd like to call the City of Apache Junction's Council Meeting to order. The invocation will be led by Vice Mayor Rizzi and the pledge will be Councilman Evans.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the privilege of being gathered here today to do the city's business on behalf of our constituents. We ask that each of us be guided by you, Father, in the decisions we make that affect others and not by any personal agenda or ego. We ask to be humble in our disagreements and that we never forget we are here to serve the people of this beautiful community. We thank you for the beautiful weather and the few spring showers that we've gotten. Father, we ask for your protection over all of our first responders, those serving in our military, and all of their family members. We ask that they be brought home safely each and every day. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Wilson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Present.
Councilmember Biggs?
Here.
Councilmember Evans?
Here.
Councilmember Gremmell?
Here.
Councilmember Nasser?
Present.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Here.
You have a quorum, Your Honor?
Thank you. Consent Agenda. As a reminder, all items under the Consent Agenda will be approved with one motion. If a council member wishes to remove an item for further discussion, the request made prior to the approval of the Consent Agenda can be moved into new business. Do I have a motion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
There's one item I would like to pull from the Consent Agenda for discussion. That would be item number four. And other than that, I move that we accept the Consent Agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Nasser?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
I will be voting no on the Consent Agenda.
Councilmember Gremmell?
Yes.
Motion passes, Your Honor.
Okay. Awards and presentations. I've got two of them here. Okay. First one's Municipal Clerks Week. The Office of Municipal Clerk, a time-honored and a virtual part of local government, exists throughout the world. And whereas the Office of the Municipal Clerk is the oldest among the public servants, and whereas the Office of Municipal Clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, local government bodies, and agencies of government at other levels. And whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, and whereas the Municipal Clerk services as information center on functions of local government and community, and whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration and the affairs of the Office of Municipal Clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meeting of their state, county, and international professional organization. And whereas it is most important, or most appreciate, that we recognize the accomplishments of the Office of Municipal Clerk. I therefore now, Chip Wilson, Mayor of the City of Apache Junction, Arizona, do hereby proclaim the week of May 2nd through 8th as Municipal Clerk's Week. Yeah, thank you.
Smile.
Do you want to say something?
I do.
Okay.
I'll stand right here so I speak to you. So, as you mentioned in the proclamation, the clerk's office is one of the oldest professions around. It was one of the first positions created in local government. You also mentioned that it is an office that usually has the first and foremost contact with the public. They kind of rely on the city clerk's office to know it all. The office has also been called the Office of Jack-of-all-trades because many things fall upon a city clerk where there is nowhere else to lay that duty in the city. The duties and responsibilities are wide and varied, but I would like to say that the job would not be possible without a supportive and knowledgeable staff. I would like to thank and recognize those responsible for the success of this department. It is because of them, their overall dedication and dedication in improving the excellent customer service, and their handling of matters that do not fall under the purview of the office and that makes this office run as smoothly as it does. I know many other city employees are dedicated in putting City of Apache Junction residents first, but I am grateful for the opportunity to recognize the excellence that these ladies put forward on a daily basis. Most of them couldn't be here tonight, but my tax auditor, Dana Martin, is present this evening, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Your Honor, can we comment?
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Your Honor. Jennifer, we just want to tell you how much we appreciate the amazing customer service coming out of that department. It's been very noticeable since you've been on with us. We know that it comes from the top down and we really appreciate your leadership, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so the other one is Building Safety Month. Whereas our city is committed to recognizing that our growth, strength, depends on the safety and economic value of homes, buildings, and infrastructure that serves our citizens both in everyday life and in times of national, excuse me, natural disaster. And whereas our confidence in the structure integrity of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion and vigilance guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professional laborers, plumbers, and others in construction industry who all, or who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. And whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by the ICC to remind the public about the critical role of local code officials and who assures us a safe, resilient, build environment of livable, economical buildings which are essential to Apache Junction's prosperity. And whereas Prevent, Prepare, Protect: Building Code Safe, the theme for the Building Safety Month of 2021, encourages all Americans to raise awareness about the importance of safe and resilient construction, fire prevention, disaster mitigation, energy conservation, water safety, training, the next generation, and new technologies in the construction industry. And whereas each year in observance of Building, excuse me, of Building Safety Month, Americans are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety and economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential services provided to all of us by local, state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies to protect the lives and property. I now therefore, Chip Wilson, Mayor of the City of Apache Junction, Arizona, do hereby proclaim May as Building Safety Month. Okay. All right. They want me to put the hat on. Okay, thank you. I'll leave it up here.
Dave's kind of shy, I guess more than I am, but thank you, Mayor and Council. You know, in the prayer, every two weeks, we hear about first responders, that we're going to pray for our first responders, and building codes are perhaps one of the first lines of defense. So I want to hats off to our first responders that are here tonight, and that's really kind of the heart of that, why there is building safety. And I want to thank the Council for their support. When the Council adopted the 2018 ICC building codes, we were on the '06 codes. We should have probably been on the '06, on the 2012. So in a couple of years, we'll be upgrading to the 2023, '04, I guess, codes. So there's been a lot going on in the building department, and it really, hats off to Dave Zellner, Rabina Schultz that's here, Leslie Castillo. They are the front line of when they meet the customer and provide all the customer service as their, people are getting their building permits. Tracy Post is not here. Tracy has been inundated doing 25 to 30 building inspections a day. We have gone from about 700 permits a year, plumbing, electrical, building, to now we're doing about 1,200 permits a year. So growth is happening, I think you're all aware of that, and we've done that with a very lean staff after the recession. We haven't added a lot of staff. I think you saw last night at the budget presentation that that's about to change, so again, we appreciate your support for that. We tallied up some projects here. In the last six, seven years, we've done, really Dave has been the glue here, 54 commercial projects. So the stuff that you see out on the street, and I'm just, I won't read all 54 of them, but Fry's and the Fry's Fuel Center, the Fry's Shops, Panda Express, Mountain America Credit Union, Wendy's, Big O Tires, Dutch Bros Discount Tire, Superstar Car Wash, Phil Roberto's, Popeyes is coming, a couple of medical buildings, Little Caesar's, Momobowl, Saigon Noms, I could go on and on here with 54 of these projects. So for the first years that Dave and I were here, we all knew nothing much was going on. So all these projects happened really in the last three or four years, and now without really adding any staff. There have been 16 residential projects totaling nearly 1,400 units. So you know that Superstition Commons, Stagecoach Trails, Belagave, Belacorona, Goldview, again, the list goes on and on, and there'll be much more. So I think the building department, the building division, has really done a yeoman's effort to try to not staff up too early, but, and try to get projects and building reviews done in a timely manner, make sure that they're safe. A lot of people don't always like to hear what we have to say, but I think it's important. And the example, we saw a picture today of Habby's. So what was out in front of Habby's? A bunch of firefighters, some of our first responders. So it was Dave Zellner who made sure they adhered to the building code, to make sure that they had the fire separations that were there. That whole section of the plaza could have been gone if it weren't for the building review and our very capable first responders. So thank you, and thank you, Dave, and Rabina, and people out in the lobby that are also too shy to come in, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Announcements and current events from Mayor and Councilmembers.
So I just have one. On Sunday was the Fourth Annual AJ Kids Idol. Former Councilmember Struble and I started this, and it's a phenomenal event that's grown every year. This year, we kind of had to scale back a little bit given COVID, but the mayor was one of our judges, as was the vice president for the school board, the Apache Junction School Board, Kami Garcia, and Liz Legenbach. All three of them, I guess, were crying their eyes out trying to find which kid was going to win. But the three girls that you see here, the one in the middle was the judge's winner, and her name is Arandy. She's a fabulous singer. She sung Adele. I forget what song, but she's, she is somebody who's going to go out and represent Apache Junction very, very well in the future. Then, of course, the audience gets to pick their winner, and that's the young lady in the pink shirt, Hannah O'Toole. And then Kelsey Hutchison is the other one. And what was great about Kelsey is that was actually mine and Jeff's choice for a winner. And she got on stage and she was very nervous and didn't know if she could kind of continue, and the encouragement from the audience kept her going. She ended up doing two other acts with different groups in the show, and it was really just, that's what this is all about, being able to see these kids grow and really showcase their talents. We've seen many of them come back year over year. Each one of those young ladies won $100 as their prize and, of course, gets to represent Apache Junction over the next year as our kids' idols. So Jeff and I also just want to thank our sponsors, Fat Man's Pizza, Paget Business Services, VFW Post 7968, the Well Done Grill at Canyon Lake, Frontier Ace Hardware and Three Phase Mechanical for helping to keep this event going this year. And we are definitely looking forward to it next year at its original date and time, which is the fourth Sunday, or the last Sunday in January. So we've got about seven months to get ready for that. So if you guys know of any kids in the Apache Junction area, K-12, they either have to go to school here or live here, we're looking for them to perform, so please get in touch with us. So thank you.
I don't have anything this week.
No, Your Honor?
Nope. All the way down?
No.
I just want to say, may the fourth be with you.
Mayor, I'll save the one item that we attended for you, but I just wanted to share in conjunction with the Kids Idol, Table of Grace Church every other Friday, that'll be this Friday at 6:00 PM, the former council member Jeff Struble puts on an open mic, and several of these kids come and practice every other Friday, so we get to see the talent oftentimes a little bit ahead in advance before the competition. Open mic is not just for the kids. It's intended for the kids, but it's for, you know, kids from zero to 99. And we have folks come out and play the guitar, they sing, we have kids come out that just are phenomenal playing the piano and instruments and singing. If you have nothing to do every other Friday, come out, again, Table of Grace Church, 555, West Apache Trail at 6:00 PM. These kids and the talent that comes out is just phenomenal.
Krista wins the next one.
Tonight, tonight, this Friday, this week.
Well, first off, I want to say, yeah, I was the, one of the judges out there, but one of the individuals that was this Kelsey. You saw her pictures, she's the one that had the glasses on. And right to the...
Left.
Left. Got to look at that, so you think. She, when she got up, you could tell she was extremely nervous. She started out, and yes, and not too far into her song, she started making a couple mistakes, and the crowd really cheered her on, and she came around. And then as she got with the other groups and being out there, she was very strong and very involved in it, and it was so nice to see that she overcame the, I'll say, the fear of being in front of all these people and decided that, you know, hey, I'm going to continue on, and we're so proud of her to continue. I also make a comment that I was attending the open house that Mr. Sertie had over across the street here, and it was kind of interesting to see all the people that were involved into that. And it was, unfortunately, I guess I got cornered into an interview, and that is now on the county site, talking about what's all available there. And I'd also like to do a special statement concerning our fire chief. Want to step forward, please? And he's going to be retiring, and we would like to recognize him in the aspect, and I'm going to turn it over to Bryant.
So Mike, hang tight right there, we're going to give you a little something here in a minute, but we have the honor and the privilege here at the City of Apache Junction to work with Chief Farber, Mike Farber, who has been a member of our community his whole life, right? Yep. But in addition to that, has served with the Fire District for nearly 41 years. It's remarkable. It's outstanding. And every once in a while, it's really important that we pause and reflect and give thanks. So tonight, Mike, on behalf of the City of Apache Junction, we express our sincere gratitude for your service to our community. We have, on May 19th, even more special time with you at the Apache Junction Multi-Generational Recreation Center, from 2:00 to 4:00, an invite to our staff and to others who want to come and celebrate your retirement with you, a major life change. I know it's really hard for you, but we're going to send you off then, I know the time is coming. I've had the great honor of working with Mike on many different projects, from our intergovernmental relations to most recently in some of our projects as we work through events. So Mike, I will save the gifts for later that come from the city, but, or from me, but Mr. Mayor, would you like to get a picture with Mike right now? Could we do that? Matt, could you do that? And then what we do then is we, I know you have another special presentation as well. So would everyone please join me in giving Mike Chief Farber a hand?
Mike, before you go, Mike, make sure, we want to hear.
I want to thank the Council and Bryant. I'm surprised how much the motions keep blowing up. I honestly thought I could get through this, but it's been 41 years, there hasn't been one day I woke up and not wanted to go to work and serve the community. I haven't missed a day in 41 years, and I've worked through, I probably got a lot of other people sick. And I make no apologies for that. As, and I've worked through torn ligaments, I just recently had spine surgery, went back to work, two days later I told them I'm not taking eight weeks off, I only got three months left. But it's been an honor. I've worked with the city councils, the mayors over the years, dating all the way back, well, actually I was a kid when Virginia Seaman was mayor here, but nonetheless, there's Jean Perkins in 12 years with Doug Coleman and Mr. Sertie, and now Mr. Wilson. And then the people that's been huge in my life are Robin Barker. She's one of the reasons why we're in PSPRS in 1992. She was with the state and got us into, because at that time, fire districts couldn't be in there, but it's, I love this community. My parents moved me from Ohio kicking and screaming in 1970, and it was 5,000 people out here. And it's been an honor to serve. And I really appreciate the effort. It's been a pleasure working with Bryant Powell for at least a decade, and Matt Busby, and I love your sense of humor, Mr. Stern. Not to mention the police chief who never takes, misses an opportunity to take a shot at me, I love that.
As long as it's not a real one.
What's that?
As long as it's not a real one.
Yeah, exactly. But today, I walked in here and Councilman Biggs made a comment that, are you going to sit in the VIP section? In case you guys don't know, that's the section with the fire chief, or police chief. And I said, no, I'll be sitting back with my wife and my crew, and he said, well, this is your last month, you get to do that. And it brings home a stark reality is, something I've loved every day is coming to an end. So I thought I'd be okay with it, but I'm not. But it's been an honor, and I appreciate, this means so much to me. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, one of the other things that we wanted to do, and we got you out here originally for this was, as everyone knows, we had, through the Superstition Horsemen's Association and the Animal Control, or Paws and Claws, we got the opportunity to, let's say, detain and rehome a very gentle and wonderful horse. And of course, we named her Gypsy because she was free-roaming and running her loose. And we ended up putting a bid out on her for the new owner, and it went out, and I'm going to have the President of the Superstition Horsemen's Association come up and do a presentation to you. It'll be hard to talk into the mic and everyone else, too.
Right. City Council, thank you for having me here tonight. My name's Daryl Cross, and the Chairman of the Superstition Horsemen's Association. And as Mayor Wilson said, several months ago, a horse was found wandering around in the city, and he was quote-unquote detained. He was brought over to the city facility here and temporarily boarded at the, in the pens that we have here. And then, once we found that there was no owner that was laying claims to this horse, through Animal Control and through the Livestock Association, it was determined that the horse was abandoned property, and it was turned over to our care and keeping. And at the time, she needed some vet care. Her feet were probably about six to eight months past due for trimming, so her feet were long. It took a couple visits from the farrier to trim them down to proper length, because you can't do it all at once. She needed some basic vet care, needed to have her teeth floated, so that's where the dentist comes in and makes her teeth better so that they can chew their food better. So in all in all, she was determined to be in really good health overall, and we decided that we would put her on display over at the rodeo grounds and put her up for adoption, and that we would have an opening bid of a minimum of $500 to try and cover our costs. So our total costs in rehabbing the horse and getting her available for adoption was $749. So we had a lot of people, we had over 10,000 hits on our Facebook page of people interested in this horse. It went pretty quick as far as the word getting out that there was a horse available. Several people came down and viewed her. One couple came down from North Scottsdale, Cave Creek area, very, very interested in the horse, kind of fell in love with her, like Mrs. Wilson did. And she wanted to see the horse, if the horse is ridable. So I volunteered to meet up on the Saturday and ride the horse before the auction started, before silent bids started and everything else. And at, let's see, probably about five minutes before the end of the auction, they put a bid on the horse of $1,750, and that was the high bid. And they ended up with one heck of a nice horse. Mayor Wilson and his wife and myself delivered the horse the next day up to their property, viewed the property, made sure that it wasn't going to a nice facility, and she is definitely in a very nice facility. The plans for her will be lots of trail rides. So her new name is Peggy.
No surprise.
So based on the funds that we've got, we paid off our expenses, and we decided as a board through Superstition Horsemen's Association to try and give back to the community. And we quickly determined that in the past, we've made some donations to Paws and Claws, we've made donations to our K-9 units here in town, and we come to the realization, too, that the Fire District needs more of these, what they call Fido bags. And I'll let Mike here tell you what a Fido bag does and what they can use them for. But what we have determined, and we went to them and asked them, how many do you need? And they said eight, and then we came up with 10. We're going to do eight to the Fire District, all of them, well, actually, all 10 are going to the Fire District, but two of them are going to come back into AJ, one to the Parks and Rec, and one to Paws and Claws. And so we have a check here. and Claws. And so we have a check here for $650 for the Superstition Fire District to get some Fido bags. And he'll be able to tell you that they use them. Just recently, they've used them.
Yeah, yeah.
We actually use this a lot. In fact, my son was on a video. It went viral in a week of 45,000 hits where they pulled a five-week puppy out of a fire. And it was significant to the family because they just lost the dog that the mother that passed away had. So they were able to find in a fire. Everything else went bad. And then they found the five-week-old puppy and they resuscitated it. And they had video of it the entire time, and people went nuts. And we've had probably six or seven that I can think of, we've used it on dogs that were on fires that we were able to resuscitate. Some were we were able to revive and others, you know, they just needed some auction. But it goes in a snout and it's made to go for dogs. So you can give it air when you're doing CPR if necessary. Sometimes it's too late, down, just like anything else. But it's been tremendous success. We use them a lot. And in fact, even just recently, we pulled out, the dog we saved, we lost two cats in the fire yesterday. But, you know, that's a family member. And people forget that. And sometimes, that's all people have. And I used to lecture when I was more rebellious as a young battalion chief. The importance, even if the house is gone, there's family pictures there. There's animals that mean a lot to people. When you lose everything else, those little things are important. And we, and our guys are very cognizant about making sure we take care of everybody's stuff because maybe the house is gone, insurance can replace that. It's the little things. And animals aren't a little thing, but pictures and everything like that. So this is appreciated. Thank you so much. And we're gonna be putting it on all of our rigs. And then we'll have also two systems set up for Parks and Recs and the other for Paws and Claws, I think it's called. So again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Your Honor, I just wanted to ask Mr. Farber one question. Were you 10 when you started? Because 41 years, just...
Okay. City manager's report, Bryant.
Your Honor, Mr. City Attorney, do we want to do the item that was pulled off the agenda now and then we can proceed?
Well, that's up to council. They could do it now. They can do it after. I think, Bryant, you have two things, correct? Two mandatory report items?
I just have one item.
Oh, one item. Well, it's up to council when you want to do it.
The new business?
No. The business is fine.
Well, we can do that next. We'll do you first and then we'll do the new business.
Okay. Thank you, Your Honor. Tonight, we have another really exceptional opportunity to honor one of our own. Let me read a letter here. Just this last month, I had an opportunity to send this letter to our Parks Recreation Director. Congratulations, Liz. On March 21st, you received your 25 years of service with the city of Apache Junction. Your commitment to serving the community is an accomplishment that needs to be recognized and rewarded. So tonight, so Liz, come on up. I want to give you a few things. She's probably not wanting to. On behalf of the city of Apache Junction and with deep appreciation and thanks for your 25 years of service, city of Apache Junction, Liz, thank you. So Liz has, yep. Don't go too far. She's also gonna receive 40 hours of time off that I really hope she'll do. Many hours of vacation that she actually gives back. So I hope she'll really do this. Liz has been with us since, for a very long time. She grew up here. She's been a longstanding member of our community. She has been a part of Parks Department the whole time and understands it fully and completely. It's an honor to work with her. She is a doer. At the moment, we get a chance to try to articulate what were her goals and vision. Liz is like, I'll do it. She's continued the great culture that has been our Parks Department for, since the beginning. And for that, I'm very grateful. And we have many more great projects to do together. Liz, do you have any words?
Sure. So, thank you, Bryant. And just wanted to say really quickly, first of all, congratulations to Mike Farber. 41 years? Wow. That's pretty amazing. And I've known him for many, many of those years. I just wanted to say that it is a blessing to be a part of this city. And, you know, my family, I grew up here, but we purposely moved back here and brought our family here to go to school here, be a part of our community because it's just such a great place. I appreciate the support that all of you have given us. We're able to do the work we do because of the support we get from our council, from our city leadership. And truly, this is just one of the best places to work. I get to work with some of the greatest directors and staff. Our Parks and Rec Department is phenomenal, and it's because of the people that are there. So I am very fortunate to get to come to work every day. Similar to what Mike said, it's great to be able to wake up every morning and be happy about where you're going to work and being proud of the work that you do. So thank you all for this very much.
And Liz was eight when she started.
She was one.
I was not gonna start that one. She's, as far as I know, ever since, yeah, been going and just a can-do attitude. When times are tough, the times are great, we just keep marching and figuring out a way. So, Your Honor, that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. New business, we'll do the one that was pulled from consent first. And that was number four.
Thank you, Your Honor. Number four, consideration of approval of professional service agreement with Apache Junction Chamber of Commerce for the operation of a local visitor information center. This would be for a term of three years, starting July 1st, 2021, through June 30th, 2024, in the total amount of $155,000, $155,831, with an option to extend the agreement up to two additional periods. And, Your Honor, as we went through this, we had a brief meeting at a council meeting and not a work session. Normally, we don't pull things off the agenda, but as we had gone through, I wanted to have some conversation about a few things. One of those things was the need for a 4% annual increase. And, Joe, I'm not sure, are we able to ask questions of the, I don't know, what do we call it, an applicant? Are we able to do that? We really didn't have a lot of discussion during that presentation.
Well, it is a little irregular. However, you pulled it from the consent, so I think you can discuss it. And you can also, it's not a public hearing where people can speak, but I think the contractors are, in this case, are called consultants, may. And you can also ask Janine any questions.
Okay, thank you. And so the one thing that just caught my attention was the 4% increase. And as we go through our city budget and we're looking at increases for our employees and different contracts that we have, I just, that just kind of grabbed me. And I didn't know if anybody else had any thoughts on that, if anybody had any comments on that, or if it was just me.
Your Honor, so I do agree with the Vice Mayor. I mean, we extend our city employees 2.5% increase.
3%.
3%.
This is proposed for this next year.
Right, 2.5%. But then, under the agreement with the chambers, 4%. I think that needs to have a little bit of a, yeah, we need to look into that a little deeper, why we are paying our employees less than what we would give for an agreement for a visitor's center every year.
Bryant, do you have a comment?
This is the agreement, or I guess I would describe it as the negotiated opportunity for them to consider, for them to provide visitor's center services. To me, the bigger picture is one of how do, how do we view, to me, it's a, if you want to do it 3%, that's, you know, that's one thing. This is for three years. This is 4%. From my perspective, this was an opportunity to continue the relationship we have with the chamber to be able to conduct visitor's center services. And if we don't do it at this rate, and they don't enter into an agreement, then that was part of the analysis, too. But we, I feel like this was a fair agreement and was comfortable with the amounts for the services that are rendered versus what it would be if we were to do it ourselves. So in the past, we have done some analysis on what it would take to rent a place, to have a facility like that, that's in the downtown, to be able to have a person, probably two people, to staff it, to have security. We're looking at about $200,000 to $250,000 a year. This contract is right around $50,000, and then you add the 4% to start out. So those are some initial thoughts from my end.
Yeah.
I personally don't have a problem with the 4% because not only is this for employee increase based on what we're covering, but they also have overhead where utilities go up. They have more expenses than just the 3% or 4% not just for employees. And on that basis, I don't have a problem with the 4%. We all know that utilities are going up. We just had a meeting about the water department, and water's going up. Electricity goes up. Cost of brochures and printing has all gone up. So I understand the, trying to equate it with something that the city does for their employees, but this is more than just pay. This is overhead, too. And overhead continually goes up. So I don't have an issue with the 4% at all.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I don't look at the percent because I don't think they're equitable. I think it's apples and oranges. 3% for the city or for employees, pay increases is one thing. It's a dollar amount. This is the percent. It just happens to be 4% to give them X amount of dollars. So I don't think you can say 3% versus 4% is comparable in any way. It's the dollar amount that you've got to look at, that what is being given to the chamber, the dollar amount. Is it a fair amount for the job that they are doing, no matter whether it was 1% or 10%, you know? It's the dollar amount. The percent compared with salaries has nothing to do with each other.
I agree to some degree, except that as we recover and come out of the situation with COVID, for me, I think it's the perception. And so I don't think it's wrong to question. And, you know, wherever we land on it is wherever we land. But I think it's only appropriate to question it. In the past, Bryant, I don't, I don't recall what the previous contracts were. But again, I would just, I would go back to, we're coming through COVID and coming out of COVID. And I understand that there, the chamber is as well. But I would also suggest that so is the city and so is the community. And so it may not necessarily be the dollar amount, but it's also the perception of, of the percent and the dollar amount. And so that was kind of a concern. And again, wherever we land is wherever we land on it.
Your Honor.
Your Honor, I think I agree with Ms. Nussar and Ms. Evans in terms of, I think they're not compatible. Although I understand what you're saying, Vice Mayor, in terms of your, it's really a dollar issue that you're concerned with, not so much necessarily that percentage amount. But I personally don't have a problem with the 4%.
I also don't have a problem with the 4%. I think our chamber does phenomenal work. I think they've shown probably one of the best examples of what a chamber can do over this last year with COVID and trying to keep things running. In terms of the contract and the 4%, I definitely understand the concern. And I, I don't like the change that happened. And I understand that was back in the 2018 council in how we were able to negotiate the contract. I know that that changed a little bit. But I'm kind of befuddled, I guess, as to why we're nickeling, diming our chamber when just two weeks ago, we approved a $25,000 raise for janitorial services with little to no question asked. And I would argue that the services that the chamber provides to the city are vastly greater than the carpets being cleaned and the windows being dressed at the city facilities. I don't have a problem with it. I think it makes sense to me as costs rise and things go, so.
I think when you talk about janitorial services, it's a little more tangible to understand the cost of, of the products going up and the cost of living with the increase in minimum wage. It might help to have the chamber come up and talk about that so that there's a better understanding.
I would actually very much like that.
Probably answer that a lot better.
And, Your Honor, just, I voted no on the janitorial services, by the way.
You want to come up and talk? Put you on the spot here.
Hello, everyone. So thank you, all of the city council, for their comments and thoughts on this process. I'm sorry. Oh, my name is Denise Hart, and I'm the president and CEO of the Apache Junction Area Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Center. How we came up with the 4% was basically, we have not had any increases. We did have some, an increase last year, but we hadn't had any increases for many years. How many years was that, Janine? It was like several years, where we were just flat back in, when Larry was in charge of the visitor's center and hadn't gotten any increases at all. We looked at the total amount that we were getting, you know, as for providing the service, which does include utilities, the actual building itself, us working with tourism entities to make sure that we have what we need to properly supply a tourism outlet for our visitors that come through. I actually, it was kind of coincidental, but this Monday morning, I had our annual meeting with Arizona Office of Tourism, the Arizona Visitor Information Center part of it. And she called me and she said, I just want to check in with you. And, and she said, how are you doing? And I said, well, we've had, you know, a reduction in visitors coming through due to COVID. And she goes, you know, I was looking through your numbers, because I have to submit numbers every single month, you know, out of state, foreign, in-state. And she says, I was looking at your numbers, and you guys are doing really well compared to all the others. And I said, really? I, you know, I was a little shocked because, you know, we've had a big reduction. And she said, oh, yeah, you know, I'm looking at all the other numbers, and you're getting a lot of visitation through your center compared to the others. So I was really happy to hear that. So we're doing our best to get the visitors through here. I think comparing the 3% to the 4%, 3% salary increase for the city employees to this is totally different because we are a service. It's not just the employees. It's not an employee raise. This is a vendor increase. And what we're trying to do is just kind of get closer to what we feel is more of what we, our services are worth. And we think we are underpaid right now. And so we're just trying to kind of inch our way up to getting an amount that is more right to what we provide. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Anyone have any questions?
No, sir.
I've got a couple. How many salary employees does a chamber have?
We have two.
Two? Okay. And would you say that the visitor's center is very beneficial for the chamber? It literally probably brings in most of the people that come in is for the visitor's center?
I would say it is beneficial, but that does not bring in most of the people to the chamber. In fact, we get, we get very few people that come in through from the chamber business. It's mostly all visitors. We get a few, a few meetings here and there, and that's it.
No, but people come in for the visitor's center. They come in to find out where things are at. They grab a brochure, things like that.
Yes, exactly.
So a lot of your people that walk in through your door are coming in for the visitor's center?
They're coming in for the visitor's center, yes.
Correct, okay.
Yeah.
They're also coming in for They're also coming in for the city of Apache Junction.
Right, a lot of city questions. When I was working from home and running the entire chamber and visitor's center by myself for two and a half months during, when COVID just broke out, I was taking all the calls. And I can't tell you how many calls I got from city residents asking me from, I need to get a perm. Where can I get a perm? Or I need to get ahold of a hospital. Can you give me the phone number of this hospital? What do I do about this? I'm, my air conditioning is broken down. It's really hot and I'm outside of my trailer sitting in the shade. Can you help me find someone to help me? It was really sad, but I was fielding all those calls for the city as well.
Denise.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Robert, do you have any other questions? One of the questions I have, and, and you kind of just hit it on the head, was during COVID, at the start of it all, yes, you guys did have to close, but you were trying to offer as many services as possible. You were a one-woman show. You were answering those phone calls, I know. And thank you for that, but how long was the chamber closed to the public in terms of not, the doors not being opened? Because you were still able to be accessed telephonically, so.
So we were closed that two and a half months and that was it. So we reopened on June 1st when most all chambers were not open and visitor's centers as well. And that's, in fact, there's still a lot of visitor's centers that are still not open. And some of them, you know, according to my rep, are open one day a week and that's it. Or Thursday through Sunday, very, very limited. And I know a lot of the, in fact, most of the East Valley Chambers of Commerce are still not open to the public today. They're still working remotely and they don't have a plan on going back yet. So we opened up last June, June 1st. And I was on a ton of Zoom calls because, as you know, and watching TV, as everybody else was probably, to find out information so I could get that out to not only our members, but to the public so they know what is the latest happening. And I spent a lot of time on that.
And you guys are back to in-person mixers now. The first one just happened. You plan to continue. You're fully operational.
We are.
At this point.
We are fully operational and we did return to our first in-person mixer in April. It was at Tara, Tara Dettles and everybody was so excited to get out. And I was excited too, not just to see everybody on Zoom. And so we are going to continue that.
Well, that's a chamber, not the, the visitor's center though.
Right.
I mean, he's talking about the visitor's center, so.
Sure.
Again, yeah, this is about the, this is about the visitor's center contract and services they perform.
Anyone else?
So I just wanted to say, Mayor, if I could, don't mean to put people on the hot seat, but we do have an obligation to explain to the community, people who question things sometimes, and I appreciate the explanation.
Sure.
So.
No problem.
Nothing, not, yeah, nothing outside of that, just, just had a few more questions to ask. And I appreciate you coming up to talk about it a little bit.
Thank you.
No, hang on Denise, because I do just kind of have one thing and you might be able to help. But is there potentially concern over the extended agreement of the two additional periods? My understanding that those were automatic extensions. I, I mean, I know.
They're automatic, but they can be rescinded. I'm not sure what the exact words would be on that, but legally.
Here's what it said, if I may, Mayor.
Yes.
Says term renewal, the term of the agreement is July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2024. Following the initial term, the parties may agree to extend this agreement up to two additional one-year automatic periods.
So is there.
Both have to agree.
So both parties would have to agree, is that right?
Yes.
But it would not have to come to council for approval, correct? It would be administratively approved?
Uh, it would be if there, the, if, yes, automatic periods. They could, they have to agree. Well, there'd have to be an agreement, an amendment that says, yes, we're, we're going to agree to the automatic period. So you'd need one, one additional time to come back to the council.
I'm lost.
What's that?
So I'm lost, Mr. City Attorney. So the direction we received, Janine, help me with this, because I think we had done a, a longer term before. Is that accurate? And, or how did we do our agreement?
It was shorter, if I remember.
Last year was a one-year contract. Prior to that was a three-year.
Okay, so we had the three-year and then I, I think we were working on.
Even in 11 and 12, we had a two-year agreement. 12 to 15 was a three-year agreement. 15, 16 was one year, 16, 17 was one year. And then 17 through, 20 was a three-year and last year, one year. So we've kind of bounced back and forth.
Thank you. So I guess my question, and, and it seems to be a little confusing, is even with, there's a three-year contract and once we're at that three-year, we have the option of up to two additional one-year automatic periods. Would those two additional automatic one-year periods come to council for an amendment? So we're at three years, so 2021, and by 2024, do we do the 2024, 2025 contract? Does that come to us or does that go at staff administratively only?
I think it would come to council because any, any amendments to the agreement, and I think that would be an amendment. It's, it's exercising your right to have an extension. I think, and we do that with other agreements. So yes, you'd have to come back for the two additional. So you bring back once, say, okay, we're going to have the two additional one-year automatic periods. So it'd be a very simple amendment. And then it could be on consent if you want.
Understood. Thank you.
It's good to clarify.
So do I have a motion to, on, on this? Consent, you can go ahead and go. Thank you. Do I have a motion for this consent agenda?
We have to make one, don't we?
No, we don't. You can just read the legislative text, really. That can be your motion.
All right, make it.
Okay, Your Honor.
Yes.
I move that we approve the, the agreement of professional, of professional services with the Apache Junction Chamber of Commerce for the operation of a local visitor's center for a term of three years, July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2024, in the amount of $155,831, with an option to extend with the agreement up to two additional peri, up to two additional one-year periods.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Roll call.
Councilmember Nasser.
Yes.
Councilmember Gremmel.
Yes.
Councilmember Evans.
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs.
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi.
Yep.
Mayor Wilson.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Consideration of Resolution 21-18 authorizing the submission of two grants to Arizona State Parks. Liz.
That's you.
Thank you, Mayor. Liz Lingebach, Parks for Recreation Director. Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Tonight, we are just bringing a resolution to you for giving us permission to have a submittal for two grants to the Arizona State Parks Association, or Arizona State Parks. The first one is our Recreation Trails Program grant, and that one is for Silly Mountain Park. We are going to be requesting some amenities totaling 88,000, a little over $88,000. The city's portion of that, that match is only 5.7%. It's a phenomenal grant for us to get involved in. What we are proposing to do with this grant is to be adding a Ramada structure as well as a primitive restroom. So what that means, it's a restroom facility that has a vault style. It's waterless. It's not a portage on, but it, it has some different amenities, so it's not regularly plumbed. And then we want to improve the security fencing in this general area that pretty much designates the difference between the parking lot and the park. Our part of that, our match would be approximately $5,000. And we could start that project as soon as the funds have been approved from the state parks. We have already met the preapproval section of that grant, and so this would be the next step in that. The second grant that is through Arizona State Parks is for our LWCF Land Water and Conservation Fund Grant. We are proposing to update our amenities at Superstition Shadows Park. We have a lot of facilities at this area or amenities that do need some updates or upgrades. In your staff memo, we've listed all the different amenities that we're looking for there. The Land Water and Conservation Fund is a grant that will fund 50% of a project. And you really want to kind of identify things that are a good substantial, going to have a substantial impact in an area. So at this facility, we are proposing to add, to redo our tennis courts, the tennis and pickleball courts resurfacing that is overdue, replacing of our restroom structure that we've all heard many different things about. It's, it's very old. It definitely needs to be renovated or completely replaced. Walkway improvements in our general area of this side of the park. We do have some transitional ADA accessibility things that we would like to address. Our south parking lot recoding is part of this grant. We already did the north parking lot last year. We are proposing to do all of our LED lighting updates for both the tennis courts and the skate park. This is a major energy efficiency retrofit that we would be looking at doing. While we do have a replacement play structure in the budget and is coming this year, we should be having it installed in June. We also have plans for fitness circuit training in this walkway here that could be utilized by our residents in the nearby area that do walk this area. Very interested in fitness opportunities. And then finally, as you recall, last year, instead of completely replacing the skate park fencing, we did a lot of maintenance in an in-house so that way we could kind of get through the next three or four years, save that amount of money. This grant could help us with that. Several of these items are things that are on our radar for, in our budget already for next year as far as would be normal maintenance things that we do. We are allowed to use those as our match. We would be committed to matching a little over $460,000, spread out over three years. So we would be able to share these projects throughout a few different budget years to be able to afford to do that. So tonight, we respectfully request consideration of the city council to approve Resolution 21-18 so that we can apply for this grant. And I'll take any questions.
Good job.
How does the school district play into this? Because I know obviously that the, the buses parked there during school year, during the school year and things. So do they have a role?
Yeah, so the main, so the main role for them is really more of talking with them. So this property is on school district property. We do have a, a good lease in this area right here. All of the amenities that we were talking about are things that would benefit them as well. But ultimately, we maintain this facility. It is our responsibility and we are using it as a park facility. So while we definitely want their blessing and their permission on it, at this point in time, we are not requesting additional funding for them. None of, while they certainly will use some of the amenities, they are primarily used for our Parks for Recreation users.
Any other questions?
Right, thank you.
Do I have a motion?
Your Honor, I move that Resolution Number 21-18, a resolution of the Mayor and the City Council of the City of Apache Junction, Arizona, authorizing the submission of the Recreation Trails Program Grant for Silly Mountain Park and the Land Water Conservation Fund Grant for Superstition Shadows Park be approved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Councilmember Schroder.
Yes.
Councilmember Nasser.
Yes.
Councilmember Evans.
Yes.
Councilmember Gremmel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi.
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs.
Yes.
Mayor Wilson.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, Your Honor.
Okay. Do I have a motion for the next meetings?
Your Honor, I move that an executive session at 6:00 PM for Monday, May 17th, and 6:00 PM for Tuesday, May 18th, 2021, be held at the City Council Conference Room and the City Council Chambers located at 300 East Superstition Boulevard in Apache Junction, Arizona, and other meetings be scheduled if necessary.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Councilmember Biggs.
Yes.
Councilmember Evans.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi.
Yes.
Councilmember Nasser.
Yes.
Councilmember Gremmel.
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder.
Yes.
Mayor Wilson.
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor. Motion passes.
Okay, call the public. I would like to remind everyone that the call of public is a courtesy and not required by law. At this time, the public to express requests, communications, comments, and suggestions. Request to speak forms must have been completed and handed to the city clerk before the end of the city manager's report. All issues shall be presented in a professional manner without personal attacks. Under the open meeting law, a council cannot engage in a discussion on issues presented, but may respond to criticism and may direct staff to follow up with the speaker directly or place the matter on future agenda for council discussion. There is a three-minute time limit for each speaker. Okay, Jason Taylor.
Good evening, councilmembers. It's an honor to be here and be part of this and to witness, to see everyone working together to, to better the city, to provide for the people and the community.
Can I get your name and address?
Oh, sure. My name is Jason Taylor and my address is 1135 South 96 Place. I'm come before you to tell you about my nonprofit Other Side Ministries.
Chef Jason.
Yes, Rev. Chef Jason. Thank you. It's good to see you. I believe you received some material from us or are receiving some material. We are partnered with Genesis Project across the street. We provide a culinary job training program. This program is completely free to the people that take our course. We only ask that they give us 50 hours of volunteer hours. We give back to Genesis through doing a bi-monthly outreach. We open it up on Sundays. They're there Monday through Friday, but we provide the same services as they do. We provide a hot meal, sandwich, hydration, anything that we can do to help and assist people. And we open it up for people to eat there in the parking area until we close at 2:00 PM. I also serve as a navigator role at Genesis on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And I help people get their IDs. I help them get birth certificates, social security cards, and whatever they need to start the process to take their life back. And our tagline or what we are here to do is empowering our community one bite at a time. I'm a chef. I also, not just a client, I'm also a member. I once was homeless and dealt with addiction and dealt with living on the streets. And I know what that life is and how quickly it is to get wrapped up in that and feel hopeless and not be able to move out of it. I was blessed by a Good Samaritan, wandered into a church and this man and God.
Keep going.
Had mercy on me, took me home, fed me, got me in a hotel that night and paid for three weeks. And I never seen that man again, but it changed trajectory in my life. So everything I do is to find the Jasons out there, the people out there. There's a lot of people who we help and, and may come for that meal. And in 21 days, as that man did, as he did for me, on that 22nd day, they just would have got the free meals again and they would have got the free clothing and that had been right back in line. I, I seen the opportunity and I hustled and I worked and I got myself working again and got myself back under my feet. And I want to find those people. I want to help those people. I want to empower those people. I want to train them and teach them and give them an opportunity to work and earn for themselves and take their lives back. We also have life skills which we are adding with one of our board members, Ray Vila, who you may know from the community.
Okay. Ray Vila.
Jason, we appreciate what you do in the community. Thank you.
Ray Villa, 2243 North Estate Circles in Mesa. I am the board chair for Jason's nonprofit organization. I've been working with Jason for the last almost four years. I really believe in what he's trying to accomplish and do here in Apache Junction. I love the community. I love working here and, and this is a great opportunity. I'm just here to support him. And like he said, we are bringing a life skills training along with the training that provides them an opportunity to develop a skill. And I will tell you right now, during this time period, I have several people that I know that own restaurants that are hurting for cooks and chefs and people to do that. And we've created a great opportunity out there. We're taking advantage of it. But we also want these people to be successful. It's one thing to train them to do a job, but if you don't train them how to change the way they think, they can't make a difference in their lives. So we're working together to create, make a difference here in Apache Junction. And we're working closely with Genesis, which is an amazing partner to work with. So I just wanted to share that and lend my support to Jason and Other Side Ministries. Thank you.
Tarma? Tama Taylor.
The better half.
You can pull the mic down.
It's really high up there. Mr. Mayor, if it's all right, my name is Tamara Taylor. I'm at 1135 South 96 Place also, and I would like to yield my time to Jason.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both. I also want to share with you the second pamphlet you received. It's our catering company. It's called Hope Cafe, which stands for helping others prosper endlessly. This is our second phase of the job training program. We give a catering company, we hire them to work these events, so they earn money. They get a chance to hone their skills with the job training. It's very specific what we teach them so that we can gain certain abilities they'll need in their culinary career. Through the catering company, we're able to expand that, and they get the taste of the pace and the speed that they will face in the restaurant industry. So it's an opportunity for them to grow, to put money in their pockets, and to continue to help the community. We get to give back. We get to provide delicious meals. We're 100% scratch kitchen. We make all our soups, all our own sauces. Everything is done by students and by myself, and it's 100% student-run. We have nine employees at this time that have worked events, myself, so this helps to supplement me as well. We also have six of our graduating students from classes two, three, four, five, and six have all worked multiple events for us and earned money as they hone their skills in this industry. All of the profits, being our social enterprise, do go back to Other Side Ministries and support the ministry. So it's a way for us to support ourselves and support our community and be able to get our food out and meet more in the community and be able to touch more people and affect the community. I, myself, am from this community. I was raised here. I went to school here. So to be able to come back and to be able to be part of the community in a helpful way, it means the world to me. So we're excited to be here. We're looking forward to working with all of you in any way we can and to bring a change and bring an opportunity.
Till it's red, till it's red.
Oh, till it's red. I opened the floor to questions in, I guess. Oh, I can't? Then I have nothing else. Thank you for your time.
Other than to say that the catered food is amazing.
Amen.
I think this is George Schroeder. I couldn't read your writing. Recognize the address.
George Schroeder, 244 West Virginia Street. Since we've had two female clerks of the court, I think humorous and fitting. You're the Mother Hubbard. We got a bunch of quacks in this city, and you keep them all in line. Okay. Mr. Cross, I would ask that we donate one of his survival bags to the new dog park as needed. Very important. I've also talked with the city tax people in regards to people who have people living on their property illegally and being supported by people on this council. They have received free amenities from these people, and it is illegal and wrong. And people know about it. What are we going to do about it? Now, my neighbors have asked me to represent here in way of conversation to introduce a petition to the council. They're demanding that the streets be fixed. This is not funny anymore, okay? This is not a maybe. This is going to happen, okay? I'm going to shut the city down if you don't fix our streets. And I don't mean two and four and six years from now, on a promise, okay? I'm going to stop your wages. I'm going to stop everything if you don't fix our streets. I can do it. It will take a little bit. I go to county, get rid of mandamus, file an appeal with the state Supreme Court, and here we go. Now, I'm not the one who sues, but I guarantee you, there's a couple people on here. They got some money. They got some pull. Please, take them seriously. You don't want this to happen. As to Mr. Weaver, he's promised, promised, and promised. I'm done with promises. I asked him for a permit for my curb. I'm going to do it anyway. Want to stop me? Go ahead. I'm going to fix my property. I'm going to keep it nice, whether he likes it or anybody else. I'm tired of spending money and not getting any results for it. It's wrong. You know it's wrong. They know it's wrong. And there are people, they come here, they take all of our money, keep our city down, say they have no money. Yet, here's all this wonderful money that they spend on their amenities and winter visitors. That doesn't help my street. Forty years, it has not helped my street. You better take me serious. You like working, right? Good.
Okay, Stephanie. Again, I can't read the last name. I apologize.
You can pull that thing down. There you go.
I'm horrible with public speaking.
You're fine.
My name is Stephanie Duarte, and I live at 1822 South Coconino Drive. I have been a resident of Apache Junction my whole life. I have watched this town grow so much, but with so much growth, not much services have been developed for the vision impaired. When my blind mother was alive, this was an issue that she wanted to address. Between her own personal experiences, which drove her from her hometown to myself watching a young blind man with his life skills coach trying to teach him how to navigate in our town, not being able to do so, since not all crosswalks at the traffic lights have sound. His coach had to guide him through the crosswalk, and this takes away his independence. And this is what brings me here today. I think getting audible crosswalks at every light would be one simple step forward in which Apache Junction can help the blind community be more independent, since there is no public transportation available. After my mother attained her independence out of Apache Junction, she was able to go to the doctor's, grocery shop, take her C and I doc to the vet, even be able to visit her friends and family, and quite frankly, she was able to live. She advocated for her fellow blind associates, as well as pursued her dreams of starting her own bakery. So many great things are possible to achieve with a little independence. I feel every blind person in our community deserves to have the same opportunities available that were not available for my mother when she resided in Apache Junction. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Barbara McGuire.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Barbara McGuire, former state senator for LD8. Apache Junction has a special place in my heart. It was the voters of Apache Junction who elected me to my first term as a state representative, and for that, I will be forever grateful. I know your job is not an easy one. I want to commend you all on running for public office and for serving your communities as a public servant. It is not an easy job. I served almost 10 years, and I can tell you. A lot of people think that, you know, you make a lot of money, it's very easy, you have no issues, no problems. I beg to differ. I know how hard you work, and I commend you for it and for making a difference here in Apache Junction. I want to thank, again, thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight. Thank the mayorship who I've known for a long, long time for his gracious invitation to come tonight. I'm hoping that the new district lines that are being drawn will once again include a portion of Apache Junction into the district that I wish to serve. Whether I announce for Congress or for a legislative district seat, it is my intention to run for public office once again and to advocate, regardless of whether AJ is in my district or not, ends up being there, which I hope, really hope it does. I love this place. But whether it is or not, I will always look out for the best interest of this community. I also have influence and sway still at a state and federal level because of my former colleagues. I have advocated for many grants, written letters of support, and helped other communities to acquire those grants. So I would like to offer the same to Apache Junction. For any grants that you're writing for or currently seeking, I would be more than happy to offer letters of support. You know, I consider this my second home, because many of my friends and family live here. I know many of you still. Many of you I don't. I hope to get to know you on a one-to-one personal level as time goes on. And I look forward to seeing all of you at the next League of Cities and Towns event. Thank you so much for your time and the privilege to speak here tonight. It's been an honor.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Okay, any comments?
Mayor, I was just going to ask Bryant and staff if we could get somebody to help look into Stephanie's concerns. I know she did reach out to me as well. I don't know how many lights, traffic lights, would we have with sound on them or not, but I guess it would be really interesting to note that and what we can do to better serve our community.
Yes. Yeah, that was.
That was yours?
That was exactly what I was going to say. Well, not exactly.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. I'll adjourn.